Hello, everybody. Thank you for sharing our special event. From now on, K Water Session Exploring the Future of International Development Cooperation in the Water Sector and Contribution to the Developing Country will officially begin. I'm Yoon Hwan Kim, Senior Manager of K Water Global Cooperation Division. This session aims to raise international awareness of strengthening climate resilience in the water sector by expanding practical partnerships through Green ODA in the water sector to solve water-related issues in developing countries and overcome the climate crisis. To begin with, the General Director of Global Cooperation Department of K Water, Dr. Yoon Dok Jo, will deliver the opening remarks. Dr. Jo, please come to the stage.
Good morning, everybody. 안녕하십니까. My name is Yoon Dok Jo, General Director of K Water and Secretary General of Asia Water Council. I really honor to have opening speech with distinguished guests. And I'd like to thank you all guests for sharing your valuable time with us at K Water and AWC. Mr. Hyun Soo Yun, Director General of Climate Change, Environment and Scientific Affairs of the Korean Ministry of Foreign Affairs, and Dr. Lee Go Kim, Director of National Research Council, and Mr. Jung Hwan Kim, the Executive Director of the Korean Environmental Industry and Technology Institute, and distinguished guests and experts from the various field, I'd like to express my sincere gratitude. The world is currently suffering from extreme weather conditions, the lack of heavy rains, typhoons, flood drought, and heat waves, and the cold spells. The climate crisis is no longer something of a distant future. It is upon us affecting our daily lives. Along with preventing the damages caused from the climate change, it is necessary to consider the key elements confidentially for socioeconomic development such as sustainable growth through protection and efficiency use of water resources, environmental protection, prevention of disease, and food security, etc. To overcome in this serious situation, the Korean government and K Water established Asia Water Council in 2016 with Asian government and international water organization and experts as a legacy of VII World War Forum, Daegu, Kyungbo. Now, the 24 countries and 151 organizations that are members of Asia Water Council, we have developed a water project with member country and the Asia International Water Week every three years to boost up Asia's agenda to the world. K Water also was designated IICC, International Environmental Cooperation Center, from the Korean Ministry of Environment, for the purpose of expanding green ODA projects for carbon neutrality. And also, the K Water is discovering and promoting various projects for reducing greenhouse gas emissions, mitigating and adapting to climate change, and developing renewable energy. In addition, the K Water ICC, that we proposed and initiated, GTI, which is the Green Transition Initiative, between Korea and Indonesia, the government during G20 meeting in Indonesia, Bali, it is expanded to all the G20 countries and the vulnerable countries. By sharing water management experience and know-how accumulated over half a century with developing countries, establishing sustainable development goal from an integrated and long-term perspective, we are focusing on carbon neutrality, water management to respond to global climate change and solve water problem. A good news is that the COP27 reached the breakthrough agreement on new loss and damage fund for vulnerable country. I think that we need to move forward on this agreement and fund to accomplish carbon neutrality. Today's agenda is international and development cooperation for freedom, peace, and prosperity. I sincerely glad and thank to all, especially speakers and panelists. I convinced that we couldn't get a final resort at this session, but we could make a great element to make a final solution and our future direction. And also, the AWC and K Water, that will continue to keep working with you to accomplish the freedom, peace, and prosperity with water for the world. Enjoy this session, the Korean culture in Korea, and keep healthy wherever you are. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Jo, for opening the session. Now, we are moving to congratulatory remarks. We are very honored to have three congratulatory remarks. Firstly, I'd like to invite Mr. Hyun Soo Yun, Director General for Climate Change, Energy, Environment, and Scientific Affairs of Ministry of Foreign Affairs of the Republic of Korea, to deliver his congratulatory remarks. Please welcome Mr. Yun with our big round of applause.
안녕하십니까. 외계부 기 환경과학외교국장 윤현수입니다.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. This is Yun Hyun Soo, Director General of Climate Change, Energy, Environment, and Scientific Affairs of MOFA. I would like to thank Mr. Cho Young Dok of the K Water, and also Mr. Soo Jae Hwang from the Global Water Partnership, and also Professor Lee Sung Ho of Korea University. It's a great honor and pleasure for me to be among such experts and luminaries. Now, as Mr. Cho Young Dok has mentioned earlier, there was the COP27 in November. So, that was held in Egypt, so the COP27. Of course, there were many issues and topics discussed, and one of them was about loss and damages for the developing countries. So, that was about the funding part. So, it was about how they're going to create funding for the loss and damages for the developing countries, and that has been a big advancement in the climate change discussion. And also, the San Diego framework, so that was about the adaptation. So, that was also a very important improvement. So, we see that there have been quite a lot of progress in the mechanisms for climate fight in developing countries. And also, related to that, of course, there was a big landslide in Pakistan. So, we see such cases occurring more and more frequently, and that has also been touched upon by many speakers. Now, water management has also become an important part of climate change and climate response. Ninety-five percent of the climate events are occurring in the form of floods or drought, meaning that there is even growing need to keep managing water. Now, for that effort, K Water and also other water-related institutes are utilizing their knowledge and experience in water management, and also conducting projects, dozens of projects in other countries in water control and management. Now, for the Ministry of Foreign Affairs, now for the, among the SDGs, the water-related agenda is number six, SDG six. So, MOFA is continuing to participate in the discussion regarding this agenda. And of course, there are many water management projects undertaken by K Water, so we are also providing support on the side. And of course, water management is an important part of the discussion today. And also, for the development cooperation project, about 240 billion won is being provided for the development cooperation projects. And so, we are also supporting a number of projects to make sure that Korea can take the leadership in water management. And of course, for the global water issues, then we do realize, and of course, it goes without saying, that there has to be cooperation among the different stakeholders as well as the experts. So, the experience and the knowledge to be shared among the experts gathered here today will no doubt be helpful in improving policymaking and improving our projects to solidify Korea's position and leadership in water management. I do look forward to constructive discussion regarding this topic, and also, I hope that Korea can continue to play an important leadership in advancing the SDG six. And of course, we at MOFA will spare no effort in supporting Korea's effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Director General Yun. Now, I'd like to invite Dr. Jung Hwan Kim, the Executive Director of Sustainable Lifestyle and Welfare Headquarters of Korea Environmental Industry and Technology Institute. Please welcome him with a warm round of applause.
Good morning. I am Jung Hwan Kim, Sustainability and Health Headquarters Vice President of Korean Environmental Industry and Technology Institute. Distinguished guests, it is great to see you, and thank you for attending today's special session. Recently, many have expressed concerns that the world we've known would not be with us anymore. That is because climate change, COVID-19, and environmental crisis has disrupted our physical and psychological foundation built by mankind since industrialization. Every corner of the world has witnessed the unprecedented level of flooding and heat wave. And increasing uncertainty caused by climate change is threatening human lives. We therefore cannot survive by maintaining the way we used to pursue. Environment has become one of the most important topic of every country, and overcoming climate change and achieving carbon neutrality became the new standard of international order. The KT, based on three axes of green technology, green finance, and green talent, has been developing carbon neutrality technologies, including climate change prediction, greenhouse gas reduction, and circular economy promotion, and carried out international cooperation projects where our technologies and experiences contribute to partners' environmental improvement. I hope that today's special session will serve as a meaningful event for promoting green new deal ODA aimed at overcoming climate crisis and strengthening Korea's cooperation with multilateral development banks and the private sector in the international community pursuing carbon neutrality. I congratulate K Water's special session on water sector international development cooperation for freedom, peace, and prosperity, and ask all the participants aggressive efforts in having regional solidarity with Asia responding to climate crisis and strengthening the technological capacity of addressing current water issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice President Kim. Last but not least, we have Dr. Lee Go Kim, the Chief of the 25th Anniversary Project Bureau of National Research Council for Economics, Humanities, and Social Sciences. Please welcome him with a big round of applause.
안녕하십니까.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Chief of the 25th Anniversary Project Bureau of National Research Council for Economics, Humanities, and Social Sciences. First of all, I would like to congratulate the hosting of this conference held by K Water and AWC. And I would like to thank General Director Yun Cho Young Dok of the Global Cooperation Department of K Water, and Director General Yun Hyun Soo for Climate Change, Energy, Environment, and Scientific Affairs of Ministry of Foreign Affairs, and Executive Director Kim Jong Hwan of Sustainable Lifestyle and Welfare Headquarters of Korean Environmental Industry and Technology Institute. I would also like to thank all the experts who are participating in the presentations and the discussions, and let me also thank everyone for enabling this event. Now, the Global Korea Forum, and its third installment this year, is being held under the slogan of "Challenge for Future, Companion for All," under the theme of international and development cooperation for freedom, peace, and prosperity. Now, they say that over 2 billion population all over the world have difficulty accessing potable water. And as the climate crisis continues with its seriousness, I believe that the sustainable social development and also cooperation in water resources is an important challenge for the international society. And that is why I believe that today's meeting is highly important and meaningful, where we will be able to discuss the future of development cooperation in water resource and also contribution to developing countries. Distinguished guests, the international community has undergone a lot of confusion and turbulence with the COVID-19 and the Russia-Ukraine war, as well as the competition between the US and China. So, the current era is an era of crisis and transformation, and under such complex crises of the global society, we must also cooperate with the international society as a global pivotal state. In the recent ASEAN Plus Three Summit, President Yun Sang Young also illustrated some of the international society's challenges that we are faced with today, and also emphasized the need for cooperation to overcome these complex set of challenges. And solidarity and cooperation to ensure sustainable society in all areas, including water, have now become more important than ever before, and Korea's role and responsibility as a global pivotal state has become even more important. Now, from our research council, we are also conducting ODA projects in Indonesia and Cambodia. And these countries are also highly interested in water resources, and they are also requesting leading technology and capability of Korea. And we have also had visits from the province of Sulawesi of Indonesia in October, and they have also requested consulting and capability building in water resources. And I believe that we will be able to have valuable discussion at this opportunity to share our experience and wisdom to provide further support. I hope that we can create a future where clean water resource will be available for everyone. Thank you.
...to understand the background of this event and Global Korea Forum. Before we move on to keynote speech and panel discussion, I kindly request to the distinguished guests and keynote speakers and panelists to come to the stage to take our commemorative portos. Please come up to the stage to congratulate us. Please. Yes, distinguished guests and panelists and keynote speakers, please come to the stage. We're gonna have a time for taking portal. Yes, please stand in the middle, and let's smile on the face, please. Okay, one. Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, from this point, we will move on to the keynote speech. We have three keynote speakers, two from off-site, onsite, and one from online. They are from GWP, Global Water Partnership, World Bank, and Asia Development Bank. Firstly, we are honored to have Ms. Jae Young Soo, Technical Committee Chair of Global Water Partnership. Please welcome Ms. Soo with a big round of applause. Jae Young Soo is Chair of the Tech Technical Committee of the Global Water Partnership of Global Action Network with over 3,000 partner organizations in 179 countries. The GWP network brings technical expertise and convening power of diverse stakeholders to design, plan, and build a water-secure world. She will address on water for sustainable and growth. The flow is yours.
Good morning. It's a pleasure to be with you today. COP27 was remarkable because water came to the forefront of the agenda as a response to climate change. But in fact, this was recognized by scientists worldwide. Ten years ago, the chief scientist of the United Kingdom, Sir John Beddington, warned that there was no chance that SDGs could be achieved because of the lack of water and stress to the water. Just 10 years later, earlier this year, at the World Economic Forum, the Economics of Water Initiative was launched, because in fact, that future that was predicted is today. Water is an urgent issue that's affecting every country, and it's on the front page of all newspapers and media. The future is now, and we must act now to support water security. One in four people around the world have our underwater stress. And unlike many global development problems, this is not a problem of poor countries alone. In the US, the recent floods caused an estimated 1.5 trillion dollars of damages to agriculture and associated trade. Europe's rivers, which are drying up, usually ferry about 85 billion dollars of transportation and trade. And in China, the increasing drought situation has caused major factories, including Toyota and Tesla, to shut down production. So, water stress is affecting every country in the world. And water stress doesn't mean always too much water. It could also be too little water. Drought floods constitute the majority of weather-related disasters in the world, and it's getting worse. Now, while water stress affects every country, it's the poor people in every country that suffer the most. The World Bank estimates that an additional 71 million people went into poverty as a result of the COVID-19 crisis. And this is estimated to be about four times as large as the poverty created in the Asian financial crisis, and in fact, could be the biggest shock to poverty since World War II. When we discuss and when we develop water projects, we must make sure that poor people are included in the design and benefits of the water projects. And water projects are not only affecting SDG six. Almost every SDG is directly or indirectly related to water. At the Global Water Partnership, Water-Secure World is the vision of this partnership. It was created almost 20 years ago by the World Bank and WMO with nine sponsoring countries. Today, the GWP network comprises over 150 countries and over 3,000 members around the world. Those of you who have studied integrated water resources management know that the fundamental tenet of GWP is that there must be a multi-stakeholder participation and consultation to ensure that everybody in society has the access to the right water quality and the right water quantity. In fact, the concept of IWM was invented by the GWP tech in 2000. So, many of you who are researching IWM know that it was actually GWP that coined the phrase. And as the newest chair of the tech, my job is to see, 20 years after the initial development of the IWM concept, is this still a concept that's robust and will carry us forward for another 20 years? In my mind, as we look at IWM 2.0, the three eyes that should be integrated are implementation, industry, and innovation. Of this, implementation is the most urgent priority, and that's what we are all here to discuss today. Almost 90% of all countries in the world identified water as being one of the primary tools to combat climate change. However, only 7% of countries have any concrete plans or any information about how to design and develop water projects. Bankable projects are a real problem. At GWP, we are currently supporting over 50 countries to learn more about the climate impacts on water, develop capacity, and strengthen awareness of how to design and plan good bankable water projects, including some of the countries where we are working to help countries access GCF funding to develop and design water projects. And what do these projects look like? Under the Africa Investment Program, GWP has supported key African countries to develop almost 23 transboundary and hydropower projects. This is critical to the food security needs of this continent. And while we always know the dramatic impact of flood, as the earlier this year, even in Seoul, that lack of water is as big a problem. So, GWP is currently working with WMO to develop a drought and flood awareness program and build capacities in countries. And finally, innovation. It is critical for small and medium enterprises to really scale up to develop the newest innovative capacity. GWP will be launching a Changemakers 2.0 competition at the UN Water Conference in March 2023, where we are hoping to identify the best companies from around the world that can scale up and help us address the water challenges. I look forward to working with all of you for a water-secure world. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. So, for delivering a keynote speech and mainstreaming water resilience for sustainable growth by sharing valuable insight and experience like AIP and GWP's ambitious Initiative 2.0 program. Next, we will invite Dr. John Ho Sung Lee, the Operation Officer of World Bank. Please welcome him with a big round of applause. John Ho Sung Lee is Operation Officer at the Korean Green Growth Trust Fund in Sustainable Development Vice President Office at World Bank. John specializes in offshore and transport sector and support, managing KGG TTF's 196 grand portfolio. He will address on the World Bank's showcase of water and climate-related project and cases of cooperation with Korea. The flow is yours now.
Thank you very much. Good morning. Good morning, everyone. It's quite a
It's quite an honor to speak right after Jay, who is considered as a mentor figure for among Korean staffs at the World Bank. When I first joined, Jay was the program manager for the water sector. So it's great to see her here again today. Unlike the previous presentation, my presentation will be more focusing on the collaboration with Korean institutions and how the bank is leveraging Korea's experience in the water sector. So, oh, here you go. And in order to explain this, I would have to, I will give you a little bit of background where I'm currently working, which is the Korea Green Growth Trust Fund. Because the examples that I'll be sharing today is limited to the work that we're funding through KGGTF. As the World Bank water sector as a whole, it's much larger, has a much more larger scope and engagement with Korea as well. But for today, as a disclaimer, I'll be, my case examples will be limited to the cases that are funded through the Korea Green Growth Trust Fund. So just to give you a little bit of background for the audience who may not be so familiar with the World Bank, the bank has two missions: to end extreme poverty and also build shared prosperity. In light of this, the Korean government and the World Bank, back in 2011, decided to join hands and create a new instrument, the Korea Green Growth Trust Fund, to help the World Bank clients better understand Korea's green growth experience, know-how, and also try to operationalize the green growth concept. This was back in 2011, when the world was still recovering from the financial crisis of 2008. So far, since the establishment and back in 2011, we have been funding more than 180 grants, approximately 100 million US dollar. And these is among all the sectors that cover green growth: urban, transport, water, agriculture, energy. And for the water sector, more in specific, the KGGTF has supported 14 grants amounting up to 66 million. And that is leveraging about 1 billion amount of lending operations that is linked to the World Bank Group operations. So I'll just be sharing two examples where our grant, out of the 14 grants I've mentioned, which kind of highlights the collaboration between Korea and the World Bank. So the first one is for Uganda. So Uganda is, has been working with the World Bank for many years on the water sector. And after many years of building infrastructure, what they realize is that the capacity building, institutional building is also very important as much as the building of the infrastructure. So the Uganda government requested the bank to help them with establishing, not only establishing, but also helping them with the initial capacity building, setting up the institutional structure framework, and also providing the initial technical training for the trainers of the Water Resource Institute in Uganda. And Kwater has been really critical partner in this process. Since 2017, this grant has been awarded. The Uganda delegation came to Korea numerous times through the KGGTF grant. And Kwater has been providing the very early-stage technical consultation, institutional framework mapping. And more recently, I think this was just like two weeks ago, the Kwater Academy, which is the, which is like the human resource arm of Kwater, have been implementing a knowledge exchange visit with the Uganda delegation who's working on the, who's working in the Water Resource Institute. So my next example is with Indonesia. I think for the Korean audience, I think for Indonesia, you might have heard a lot about relocation of Jakarta because of the sinking issue. But as, that is a prevalent issue for the current capital of Jakarta. But one thing, I don't think it gets so publicized in the media is the issue of dealing with sewage and wastewater. I know this is, you know, the waste, treating of waste is usually not the most, you know, desired or sexiest topic in the development agenda, but it's very important. So the bank and the Indonesia government has been working to develop the national urban wastewater management project. However, because of the, as I mentioned, the Jakarta, I mean, not the Indonesia government is now a little bit more concerned or their number one priority is to relocate the current capital to, from Java island to another island, more central. So meaning this project, which is also equally important, has been a little bit postponed. In this case, KT, who's also present here today, has been able to provide a sort of a bilateral bridge financing to help the Indonesia government, working together with the World Bank Group, to come up with more technic, to provide technical sort of a pre-feasibility on the sewage and wastewater project to provide more citywide inclusive sanitation throughout the country. So this is, there's, there's actually a few, I didn't provide the link because of the time limitation, but if you are more curious, you can Google, you can Google and YouTube and find this video YouTube clip. It's only 10 minutes and you'll be able to see like what exactly KT and the World Bank did together to advance on this project. And hopefully, this will become a World Bank Group lending operations in the near future. So I, so before I conclude, I just wanted to highlight how valuable Korea's experience has been. I'm not a water specialist. I'm actually an urban planner. But through working at the Korea Green Growth Trust Fund for the past seven years, I've interacted with a lot of water colleagues from the World Bank. And what they share with me is that Korea's experience is not only good because, you know, at the current status, you see all the great things, but also Korea actually summarizes the entire development spectrum within the water sector. So some colleagues have been telling me that there's a gold, it's a, Korea is a goldmine of experiences in terms of development agenda. So at the Korea Green Growth Trust Fund, what we've been trying to do is capture these knowledges and make it into knowledge series. We do have a, for the one in the knowledge note series, we do have a water sector knowledge series jointly written together with Kwater. And it discusses about the Four River Restoration Project in Korea and, you know, all the implications and what other countries can learn moving forward. I just wanted to also conclude through our grant, there has been many teams who have visited Korea to learn about the Korea's water, from water supply to water sanitation treatment. And it has been very valuable, helping the clients better understand how to design better projects and move forward. So these are just facts and I'd like to conclude. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lee. Once again, your pleasure for sharing your insight and World Bank examples, cooperation examples with Korea, Kwater, and KT. Yeah. Next, last but not least, we will invite Dr. Elise Udrup, Water Security Specialist of ADB from Online. She's participating online. Elise Udrup joined ADB in 2003 and is an environmental and natural resource economist with more than 15 years of experience working on urban water supply and sanitation and natural resources management project in Southeast Asia and Pacific. Ms. Udrup, you have authority to share your material on the screen.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's a, it's a pleasure to be here with you today. Thank you so much for the invitation and I hope you can see my screen. Today, my presentation will focus on presenting ADB's water resilience initiatives and our efforts really to put climate resilience at the forefront of our work on, in the water sector in Asia and the Pacific. So maybe just to quickly set the scene, I think this, many already know, of course, the context in Asia, but about 500 million people lack access to safe water and about 1.4 billion people in the region don't have access to improved sanitation services. Yet, Asia and the Pacific account for 60% of the world's population and only have 36% of its water resources. Some of the other big challenges we're facing in the region linked to water insecurity and of course exacerbated by climate change, as you've heard from the other keynote speakers. Of course, water, freshwater uses about 70% of water for irrigation. And Asia has a, so this pressure on irrigation is leading to over-extraction of groundwater resources, which again, in the context of climate change, is posing a number of challenges. Asia has the largest number of, over half of the undernourished people in Asia. So food security is critical. So the challenges around boosting agricultural productivity while ensuring water, efficient water use. Asians and the Pacific are also one of the most disaster-prone areas in the world. About 40% of disasters are triggered in the region and affecting about 84%. People affected by global disasters are here in the region. By 2030, more than half of the population will be living in urban areas, creating additional demands for water supply, sanitation services. Yet currently, only 80% of urban wastewater is treated. The rest is discharged, untreated, posing pollution, environmental risks, public health risks. So under ADB's Strategy 2030, this is our long-term strategy with our objective of promoting a prosperous, inclusive, resilient, and sustainable Asia-Pacific aligned with the Sustainable Development Goals. One of our key operational priorities is tackling climate change, building climate and disaster resilience, and enhancing environmental sustainability. ADB has set an ambition of raising 100 billion in climate change financing from our own resources by 2030, including 34 billion in climate adaptation finance. And water will play a key role in that because we know that, especially as echoed in the sixth IPCC Assessment Report that came out earlier this year, climate impacts will primarily be felt through water. So it's critical that we build the resilience of water entities on our, on the ground, utilities, water agencies, that are really on the front lines of climate change. So maybe just to give a snapshot of ADB's water portfolio, ADB has a portfolio in the water sector of about 26.6 billion US dollars and estimated to be supporting or benefiting about 650 million people in the region. More than half of our portfolio is around water supply, sanitation, wastewater, with the remainder on irrigation, agricultural drainage, water resources management, flood management, and hydropower. So there's big opportunities for us to use our water portfolio and ensure that we're building resilience into the delivery of our water sector support in Asia and the Pacific. So recently, we've launched initiatives to support this objective of a water secure and resilient Asia-Pacific through several initiatives. We have an umbrella initiative which is called the Are You Water Resilient? And this is really a call to action among our water entities in the region to help work with them to build their capacity, give them the tools and resources they need to make their operations resilient. So I'll be briefly just going through some of these initiatives under Are You Water Resilient? Including our mainstreaming guidance note that was issued this year and our Asia-Pacific Water Resilience Hub that was also launched this year. So our guidance note that was published is based on six pillars around, we really want to engage upstream and build demand among our clients for resilient water investments. We also want to get upstream in the planning stage to ensure from the onset that investments are designed with a mindset around being able to effectively cope and manage with climate change risks. It adopts a community water approach to build capacity. We aim to foster knowledge, innovation, and partnerships because of course, having that knowledge around climate risks and how to effectively manage those is critical. Of course, you need finance around to support investments in resilience and we see digitization as being key to ensuring the efficiency and effectiveness of investment. Next is the Resilience Hub. This is an online platform where we connect our water entities to resources like tools, knowledge pieces, basically to, and training to enable our, the more than 1,000 watered entities that ADB works with to make sure that they're easily, they have easy access to all the resources they need to start their resilience journey. We also are inviting key partners, governments, knowledge institutes, civil society, private sector, to join our resilience hub so that they can share the tools and knowledge they have in this area in the water sector. So we've included the QR code in the slides, so please do join our Water Resilience Hub to support our resilience efforts. And then finally, we recently launched what we call the Asia-Pacific Water Resilience Initiative. This is our aim to mobilize 10 billion of that 100 billion goal I mentioned, 10 billion in adaptation resources for the water sector. And to do that, we're trying to mobilize about 200 million dollars in grant financing between 2021 and 2025 for the grant financing to then leverage about 10 billion in adaptation resources for the water sector by 2030. So we were moving towards mobilizing about 40 million per year in the water sector to achieve that, that objective on the 200 million, which will then lead to investments, we hope, in about 10 billion of financing. And just very quickly, I'll, in terms of, we have a number of facilities that are supporting resilience investments. We have a technical assistance facility on mainstreaming climate resilience, which is supporting digitization. I'm very pleased that we're working with, we received funding through the government of Korea, the Easia Knowledge Partnership Fund to support the digitization work. We also have activities under here supporting climate risk assessment, adaptive pathways planning, as well as twinning partnerships between water organizations. We also have a water financing partnership facility which has about, currently about 116 million in resources to support improved water management with an increasing focus on resilience. And this year, we mobilized another 30 million for this facility to provide support. And then just quickly showing our key, we, Japan and Korea are again key partners in the water sector. So over the past 10 years, we have been able to work with these partners to mobilize substantial resources for the water sector and we hope to continue these partnerships in water. Great. So I'll stop there. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Allison, for introducing ADB's strategic and new initiatives. We know that ADB officially launched the Are You Resilience Initiative in COP27. I hope Korea and the participating organization here, Kwater, KT, and GGI could be our important, our partner for the initiative. From now on, we will have a panel discussion. I'd like to introduce today's panelists and moderator each by each. Firstly, Professor Pilik, he plays an active role in solving Asia water problems and he is a Vice President of Asia Water Council. Please welcome him with a big round of applause. Okay. Next, we have Dr. Haksok Yu, Head of Korea Region Unit of GGI Global Green Growth Institute. GGI is only international organization with a focus on green growth. He is in charge of the cooperation between GGI and Korea organizations, including government ministry. Please welcome him with a big round of applause. Next, let me introduce Hyunggyu Park, Head of Power and Power Project Development of Korea Overseas Infrastructure and Urban Development Corporation, KIND. He has over 28 years of global experience. He has over 28 years of global experience in power, water utility, refinery and other infrastructure process. Please welcome him with a big applause. We also have Ms. Ju Nam from IFC International Finance Corporation. She is an Investment Officer and Infrastructure Investment Country Anchor for Korea at the International Finance Corporation. Please welcome him with a big round of applause. And also, we have Dr. Allison Udrup from ADB and one of today's key speaker. And Dr. John Hilsong Lee from World Bank, he is also participating in the panel discussion. Lastly, I'd like to, today's moderator, Sung Ho Lee of Korea University to moderate today's panel discussion. Please welcome him with a big round of applause. He specializes in water policies and management, mainly focusing on institutional aspect. His research and teaching have covered the water policy and institutional change, public-private partnership and so on. Let's, now the professor will lead the panel discussion. Professor, the applause yours.
Thank you very much. And again, I am very happy to be here and also I was very surprised to know many things, particularly the, all the big commitments from ADB and World Bank and other, also Korean government, as well as of course, Japanese government, helping the world, particularly Asia and the Pacific, to go forward for nurturing climate resilience, particularly related to water sector. And I, I've got the, we have about, yes, 40 minutes. And 10 minutes, we're going to spend some free discussion related to a common question. So any panel members, if you have any comments, any insights about the question, please feel free to say within 10 minutes. After 10 minutes, I'm going to ask a couple of questions to each panelist and you are free to say about five minutes each and we can then finish our discussion. My common question is that the, the world is facing crisis such as the economic downturn caused by COVID-19. In addition, typhoons, floods and extreme weather events now occurred or due to climate change. From this point of view, government policies for revitalizing the economy in the post-COVID-19 era and improving the ability to respond to climate change are being actively discussed. I'd like to ask your insights or your thoughts on how Asian countries should prepare and also the, the Korean government and also Korean companies can really cooperate with its neighbors in Asia. Anyone, if you have any thoughts and insight, please feel free to say. Who is going to start first?
Maybe I, if I, I will take this briefly, that's an excellent question. I think as we've heard from every speaker today, climate is at the forefront of our development future and it's, it's critical that we start planning as, as we emerge from the COVID-19 pandemic. And I think that we continue to face a number of challenges, but I think we also can look at the need to build resilience as an opportunity as we emerge from the COVID-19 pandemic and we start to plan and implement a recovery strategy and ensuring that it's green, inclusive and resilient. So I would say maybe as we talk to our client countries from ADB's side in facing the future while tackling some of the huge water challenges we face is, it's really an opportunity to look at how we are developing the water sector in the region to plan better, plan smarter, use water more efficiently. And currently in Asia, about 50% of our water is lost through, through non-revenue water. That's a huge amount of water that can be captured. So I think we have to start doing more adaptive planning on how we fundamentally transform our water sector to meet the challenges of the future, to be inclusive as we hear. We still have huge challenges, 500 million people who lack access to, to big water supply and 1.4 billion on sanitation. So I think it's, it's, we need to plan better, deliver better, factor adaptation measures into our design of water supply systems. I mentioned digitization and maybe here, I, I think this is a big opportunity. Never before have, have we had technologies to allow us to plan better. We now can use satellite imagery to measure water productivity. We now have artificial intelligence. We have sensors, for example, that can help detect leaks. So this will go a long way in improving efficiency. And in terms of working with Korea, I'm really pleased on, as I mentioned during, on digitization, that we are working with Kwater in the Solomon Islands to look at how we can improve, bring digitization to improve wastewater processes. And similarly, in Nepal, we're working with Korea Rural Community Corporation. So yeah, I think we've, just to be separated, we do face a number of challenges, but I, I do see some opportunities for, from those challenges to build a more water secure and resilient water in our region. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think Philippe, you want to say something?
Yes, very quickly and following what has been nicely presented by, by the three keynote speakers. Just to say, what we have seen with most of the crises we have faced, especially during the COVID situation, but also linked, directly linked to the climate changings, is clearly that we should integrate the water sector to a more global and a more holistic approach. The water sector is not alone. It, it has to be integrated with the approach which is linked to the urban development. I'm happy that our colleagues from, from the World Bank is, is an urban planner. So at least today, you have seen the interest to integrate the water question within the cities and to rethink completely some of the paradigms we are using for the development of cities. Our cities must be resilient. If our cities are resilient, the water networks, the water solution will be resilient at the same time. And we should integrate the approach that are needed regarding the climate adaptation.
Yes, any other thoughts from panelists? Please.
So to, in order to revitalize the economy in a post-COVID-19 era, I would like to suggest that the Asian countries to more actively develop and implement the various infrastructure projects, including water-related project on the PPP scheme. When a government implement an infrastructure project on PPP scheme, the government need to provide private investor with a stable and bankable legal framework by taking various political risks by themselves. And through implementing the infrastructure project on PPP scheme, the host government can enjoy more and more foreign direct investment flowing into the country, which will be definitely beneficial to help revitalize the economy. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And yes, GGI, please.
Yes, thank you. I think the chair. So indeed, your question is my standing in problems, so my personal topic for me to think always. So indeed, I work for GGI as Head of Korea Liaison Unit and also I'm in charge of every kind of relations and cooperation with Korea. But before joining GGI, I was the Director for Energy and Scientific Divisions at MOFA. So my title is, in this plate is a little wrong and previous one. But at the time, when I was the Director, I also, I was also engaged in the kind of COVID-19 pandemic and crisis. So the question from the chair is quite relevant for me. So indeed, how to recover from the COVID-19 pandemic is quite important. At the time, the value of nature and the green component was, was highlighted again and the value of water also refound at the time. And so today's discussion topic is that the future of international development cooperation, so-called ODA in the post-COVID-19 era. So now we sometimes talk about the green ODA. So what is green ODA? So now we are talking about the water. But water cooperation also can be considered as one of the component of green ODAs. So in the conventional ODA concept, so at the time, we think green component can be used for the enhancing for ODA itself. But here, now what we are talking is that green ODA. So ODA for green, for greener world. So the totally different approach can be considered. So water also considered to be used for, used as a way and means to the better address of the climate change. So to find new value of water in this COVID-19 situations, so maybe we can consider water in the perspective of mitigation or adaptation. So many of them, many of us considers water is the area of adaptation in the new concept. But it is really important and also quite a tricky question, how to address, how to approach water in this perspective. So how to measure the emissions of carbons from the water sector? It is quite a practical question. So to have, to build a solid mechanism of MRB, measurement, reporting, verification is quite important. So by doing this, we can find, we can explore the future of our development cooperation in the Asian regions as well, I think.
Thank you so much. And maybe we have some bit of time for inviting one more panelist comments. Anyone, before we move on to each panelist comments? Okay, if you don't have more questions, let me start my question to maybe the first IFC, Ms. Nam Ju. I'd like to, as a question about IFC's work. I understand IFC is focusing on supporting developing countries and private sector participation, particularly from the perspectives of climate change, circular economy and green recovery. Would you like to introduce some relevant programs in detail? Particularly and share your thoughts on the role of Korea and for developing countries and together with IFC, please?
Thank you. So as you're aware, IFC is a private sector arm of the World Bank Group. So we are investing in the for-profit and commercial project and through that investment, we are promoting project development in the emerging markets. In terms of the climate responses, we have this plan by 2023, 85% of IFC board-approved real sector project should be Paris-aligned financing and 100% by 2025. So for this target, IFC will work together with our private sector partners on the more climate-friendly and also resilient project. That's what's our target, which is very challenging for us, but nevertheless, we will look forward to achieving these goals together with all the global partners. And following the World Bank Group's Climate Action Plan, we will focus a five key systems, which represent the 90% of the gas, green gas, greenhouse gas emission. And this includes power and water, agriculture, land, transport and manufacture. And for these key strategy areas, we see as a private sector arm of World Bank Group will work with the private sector companies more aggressively to achieve the green climate in the world. So for, I mean, cooperation with Korea and what's the role that Korea should play? My thought is that Korea is now the donor country and also the developers in the world. So we look forward to more Korean private sector companies to invest in emerging markets and working with multilateral financiers as well as the foreign governments and promote all these climate-friendly projects in the world and also get to the target of net zero in 2050. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And maybe, maybe I, I'm going to ask the question to Philippe. I know that you have several hats and you're doing multiple jobs. But then may, amongst them, I'd like to ask you to introduce AWC first, just in case some people, maybe they are not really familiar with. And then we'd like to introduce some of the main progress and achievements water products listed by AWC so far.
Yeah, yeah, with pleasure. So just to remind to, to the audience what AWC is. So AWC is a young organization, so we started in 2016. The ambition is to create a platform which is allowing the major water actor from Asia to meet, to share, to exchange about their experience, about their success stories. What we had in mind was to try to promote an Asian vision regarding the water problems. Being flooded in Asia has not the same meaning as being flooded in Europe, if I may say that. So the action of the population is not the same, the way of dealing with the situation is not the same. And so there is a need for finding concepts, paradigms that are matching with the reality of the Asian societies and to move for robust and efficient societies. There is a lot of challenges regarding sanitation, water supply in Asian countries. Solutions that should be invented over there should be based on new technologies. We have this possibility to implement and to move forward, to leapfrog in fact, within the development. And so this is the opportunity. So the organization today is welcoming more than 150 members. We have 20 countries participating. We have engaged a lot of actions for supporting new concept development. We have one partnership with OECD, with a water dialogue with each country to set up a kind of diagnostic regarding the water situation. And we have one Asian International Water Week, which is held every three years where we are welcoming our members to join and also to participate for this promotion. We had the meeting earlier this year in, in Indonesia. The next one will be in three years in Beijing in China, also to show the diversity of the situation in, in, in Asia. And so this is a platform and of course, I'm very happy to invite of all of our participants of today to join and to, and to attend our session, especially the people representing the financial institution. And just to elaborate on the second part of your question, we are supporting and pushing pre-feasibility activities under the Asian Water Council. So the idea is to help especially the developing countries to have a more elaborated vision of what they would like to do regarding their water resources and their water problems and to help them to have a more consistent project to be submitted to you. So we are looking also for this partnership and to see how we can, both of us working together for promoting your approach, which is completely matching our, our objective. We have this platform to elaborate and to create the consensus. So this is basically the idea, which is, which is behind. Regarding the topics and very quickly, one of the baseline of the Asian Water Council is to push smart water solutions. So we did some pre-feasibility and project, especially in Indonesia, in Bali in particular, for, for identifying leakages and trying to see how we can improve the water supply. You know the challenges that are behind. We strongly believe that with smart and cost-efficient solution, we may strongly improve the efficiency for water supply, but also for irrigation. There are a lot of efforts that have been made, for example, in China to reduce the water consumption and to face the challenge of climate change. Reducing availability of water in irrigation parameters is also a challenge where we need to adapt also the crops that could be supported by the water available. This is part of the work that we are doing in addition of the disaster prevention. A lot of things and once again, you are all welcome to, to attend and to participate and to join the activity after this session, of course.
Fantastic, Philippe. I think he got tons of things to say, but I think he's trying to squeeze everything into within five minutes. Thank you so much. And then I, I'd like to ask a question about the KIND, Mr. Park Hyung-yu's work because I have a limited knowledge about what you have been doing. Perhaps this is a good time to introduce your institution work as well as also your own strategy and plan in cooperation with developing countries. Thank you.
So let me briefly introduce KIND first. So KIND stands for Korea Overseas Infrastructure and Urban Development Corporation. KIND is a Korean government-owned entity which is established in 2018. We are two years younger than AWC. Our role for the, is to promote the Korean Construction and Operation Company in expanding their overseas investment business in the area of various infrastructure projects, including water-related project. When we support the Korean Construction and Operation Company, when they are involved in the various infrastructure project, we are providing we are providing them with the financial feasibility study services and we are providing equity financing. And sometimes we are providing debt facilities to their project. And when we support the, we are involved in the overseas infrastructure project, we usually cooperate with the Korean Construction and Operation Company, who have sufficient knowledges and know-how in terms of technological point of view and operation point of view. So when we are involved in the infrastructure project to support the overseas government, we can provide the host government with the one-stop solution for the successful implementation of the project throughout the project lifecycle, from feasibility study, financing arrangement till the construction and the operation of the facilities.
Thank you so much. Now I think we have a better understanding of what KIND is doing. And, and I'd like to ask the John Hosen Lee. I think you introduced the fantastic examples of how the World Bank has been cooperating with South Korea. And could you elaborate with further? And maybe you may have some more products and also you may have some kind of future plan and maybe trying to develop much more in cooperation with South Korea. Could you tell us more about that? Thank you.
Yes, so, so what I can explain is we'll be also again limited to engagement through the Korea Green Growth Trust Fund. The water sector as a whole has a much more larger engagement, which I, I'm not fully aware, because the World Bank is kind of like a conglomerate if you compare it to a Korean company. So I would say we, we do have a lot of ongoing projects. The Uganda one, the case I've shared with you, it's more at the ending phase, whereas the Indonesia one, we're still a lot more to go. And we're, we're funding actually many regional projects as well. One in East Africa with the Victoria, Lake Victoria Basin, because they share this big watershed together with multiple countries there. So we don't, just because the nature of the, the trust fund, we fund seven different sectors. We, we're not, we're not able to give a preferential treatment to only water. The, the funding is, gets distributed more, more or less equally. But one thing I, you know, after also listening to the other keynote speakers, one thing I think our developing country partners should bear in mind is just looking at Korea's remarkable development history. Usually I think the, even from the Korean government's side, when, when they talk about the miracle of Han River or, you know, the rapid development, they first put out the Kyungbo Expressway example, because that was like sort of the, the key, key infrastructure that was needed to lead this export-driven development model. However, I think after working with the, I've been working with the Korea for seven plus years now. And one thing I realized is before Kyungbo Expressway, in order to actually provide the, the, you know, development of the cities, especially the Seoul Metropolitan Region, the, the building of Sooyanggang Dam and securing the water supply was actually, preceded the infrastructure development, because first people needed to be able to live their livelihood. And, and then, you know, the light manufacturing started and then later on, the heavy industry also went on. I think it's, I'm not trying to advocate for our, you know, developing country partners to, you know, build more dams. What I want to emphasize here is because a lot of the climate-related issues is really related to water. And, you know, tackling water is actually not only for, you know, for security in human lives, but also it's directly linked to, you know, the dealing with climate change. And I, here I cannot give you the silver bullet-like solution, what would be that, you know, you know, item that, that the countries can actually proceed. But I, I would want to still emphasize that back 40 or 50 years ago, when Korea was going through that process, water was, you know, the essential and it is still today. And I think our client, you know, countries should also kind of bear that in mind. And it's great that Korea is actually supporting, you know, through many mechanisms. Even I've learned today that ADB also has a big sizable Korean funding available for the water sector, somewhat even larger than what we're getting at the World Bank. So I'm a little bit jealous to hear that today. But yeah, but so we're really grateful that the Korean government is able to share, not only fun, but also greatly share all these great experience to entities like K Water or KT and also the KR, Korea Rural Corporation was also mentioned, who's not here. But yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much. I, I think your comments are perfectly resonates what Dr. Soo just mentioned about the water is everywhere, particularly embedded in every corner of SDG. So that's, I think, a fantastic reinterpretation. Maybe I'm going to ask the very brief comments from Mr. Yu, GGGI. Could you share the, your perhaps some, the expressway or strategy for, to given to developing countries? If they want to do, tap into your GGGI funding or projects? And what can, what kind of advice can you give to the developing countries to work together with GGGI?
Thank you, moderator. So as I mentioned before, I'm from the GGGI and some of you might not have been, might not have some full knowledge about our institute. So indeed, GGGI means Global Green Growth Institute. But the instant gives sometimes misunderstanding to you. So but our organization is an international organization, not an academic institute. So indeed, this year marks 10th anniversary since its creation as an international organizations. So indeed, we have numerous projects in GGGI. But the most, biggest difference of our project with other projects in other organization is that green component. So as I've mentioned before, we put green as a goal, not as means. And so in our project, we emphasize the green component, not as, not as a means, but as a, as a goal. So we provide some policy, policy advices to the government and sometimes we conduct pre-FS or FS. And sometimes by ourselves, by ourselves, we implement, we develop project as well. So indeed, through the, every phase of the project development, we try to match some funds to the each step of the process. So indeed, when we develop some green project, of course, we have close and long consultation with the country and we try to find relevant funds. So which includes ODA funds, sometimes the funds from the, I mean, the private, private fund. And sometimes we are asking for the use of the Green Climate Fund as well. So we don't care the nature of the funds. So if there is a demand of green projects, we develop the project more specifically. And also we try to match the funds with the project by its nature. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm sure that will be very helpful developing countries to work together with GGGI. Let me invite Mr. Udrav. Yes, I know you're still there. It's a very, it's a pity not to have you here anyway. But would you say a final word before we go? I know that you have been talking about fantastic or colorful works and ADB is doing. Do you have anything more to say? Quickly, please?
Quickly, sure. I think I have covered the water resilience measures that we are supporting at ADB. But maybe I just wanted to echo, there was comments made on the need for PPPs as being part of the solutions. And I just wanted to maybe also mention from ADB's side, I think another area where we're really working on is crowding in financing for the water sector. It's been, we worked with OECD a few years ago and estimated that about $53 billion per year is needed in Asia and the Pacific to crowd in, sorry, to finance SDG six achievements. And that money is way beyond what the public sector can provide. So I think one of the areas we really are also pushing is trying to crowd in more private sector financing. Right now, the public sector provides about 90% of financing and we really need to sort of work on creating the enabling environment. So ADB is looking at supporting policy and regulatory reforms around tariff reforms to bring in, in accordance with private sector to invest in water, as well as bringing in innovative financing mechanisms to de-risk and blend investments in the water sector to improve the risk-return profile. And we also have a couple of facilities that we're using to do that. We have something called the ASEAN Catalytic Green Finance Facility. We're also working with HSBC and Temasek Capital again to support what we call as marginally bankable investments, to bring in concessional resources to ensure that we can crowd in commercial financing for the sector. So I'll just, I'll stop there. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. So your final comments. Now I think we, it's time to close our discussion. I'd like to say thank you again for all the panelists and your wonderful comments. Thank you.
We are probably K Water and AWC. I'd like to special appreciation to the delivering in conference remarks and keynote speeches and panel discussion and wonderfully moderating. So thank you for, again, for the audience as well. We prepared a small gift for our audience. Don't forget to take the gift when you get back, go back. So this will officially conclude K Water AWC special session. Thank you for sharing your precious time. Thank you.